Start it. The City Council for the City of Brookshire, Texas will hold a special City Council meeting on May fourteenth, twenty twenty five at seven P. M. in the City Council chambers to consider the following. Can we have prayer by Dr. Ellen Jones?
Shall we pray? Eternal God, our Father, we come excitedly upon this day with thanksgiving within our heart and praise upon our minds. For God, you've been gracious enough to us to provide us life today, and you have kept us through the course of this day. But yet we pause right now to invite you into this meeting, into this chambers right now, and we ask, oh, God, that you make yourself happy. Touch council right now and touch those who'll be sworn in, that they will continue to lead our city to where you want it to be. We actually continue to provide the love throughout the citizens, to remove the competitive nature, oh, God, but yet bring in a comfort of mercy, oh, God, that we continue to reach out toward one another. And we exalt this prayer in your darling son, Jesus, we do pray. Amen, and thank God.
Please.
Congratulations to the mayor of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the unity of Christ.
A roll call, please.
Mayor Dale Branch. Mayor Pro Tim Richards.
Present.
Alderwoman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman McInally. Alderwoman Magdae, present. Alderman Green.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Public comments per Texas Open Meetings Act and Texas Government Code five five one zero zero seven. The City Council may not discuss or take action on any items not listed on the agenda. Each member of the public wishing to speak must sign in before the meeting, which is limited to three minutes. I have Ms. Stephanie Green.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm gonna stick to the script. Uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate our newly elected officials in City Council and Mayor on your win. Um, second, I would like to thank each of you who came out and voted in the May third election. Whether you voted for or against the Water District bond, your voice has been heard, and your vote will not be taken for granted. This bond that you have, uh, elected to, uh, pass will benefit our city, our citizens for years to come. And we really appreciate it, and we thank you, and we will move forward with integrity and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, discussion if possible, action regarding resolution fourteen ninety nine. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Brookshire, Texas canvassing the return for and declaring the results of the general municipal election held on May third, twenty twenty five to elect the mayor and elect Alderman position one and two of the City Council for the City of Brookshire.
Resolution fourteen ninety nine, a resolution canvassing the returns of the general election held on the third day of May twenty twenty five to elect council members for mayor position one and position two, each for a two-year term and declaring the results of said election. Whereas on the sixth day of February twenty twenty five, the Council of the City of Brookshire ordered general election to be held May third, twenty twenty five for the purpose of electing mayor and council members for City Council place one and two. Whereas on May fourth, twenty twenty four, an election was held to elect mayor and council members to fill places one and two. And whereas the City Council has investigated all matters pertaining to said election, including the ordering, giving notice, officers holding and making returns of said election, all as required by federal, state, and local law. Whereas the election officers who held said election have duly made the returns of the results thereof. Said returns have been duly delivered to the council and now necessary to declare the official results of canvas. Whereas the City Council has diligently inquired into the poll list and official election returns, which were duly and lawfully made to the City Council by the judge and clerks holding and conducting the election, the poll lists and official election returns showing separately the votes cast in the election. Whereas from the returns, the City Council hereby finds the following votes were cast in the election by voters who res- who reside qualified electors of the city. Mayor Darrell Branch, fifty-nine votes, thirteen point twenty-three percent. Robert Chris Richards, two hundred ninety-four votes, sixty-five point ninety-two percent. Tony McInally, ninety-three votes, twenty percent, twenty point eighty-five percent. Position one, Monique Taylor, two hundred and twenty-six votes. Seven seventy-two point sixty-two percent. Mary Maria Arti Etcha, a hundred and eighteen, twenty-seven point thirty-eight percent. Position two, Lyndon Stamps, three hundred and seventy-six votes at a hundred percent. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Brookshire, Texas. Section one, the City Council having convened convened in a special council meeting on this fourteenth day of May twenty twenty five to canvass the returns of the general election held on May third, twenty twenty five. After canvassing the returns of this election, officially find and determine the election was duly ordered. Proper notice of the election was given, proper election officers were duly appointed prior to the election. The election was duly held held. The city has compiled with the federal, state, and local law, and due returns of the results of the election have been made and delivered, all in ordinance within the law and the ordinance calling the election. Section two, as a result of May third, twenty twenty five general election, the following individuals were elected to serve as mayor and city council members for place one and two, with their respective two-year terms beginning on the fourteenth day of May twenty twenty five, and shall take office upon qualification after taking the required oaths and shall serve until their successors are duly elected and qualified. Mayor Robert Chris Richards. Council member place one, Monique Taylor. Council member place two, Lyndon Stamps, duly passed and approved on the fourteenth day of May twenty twenty five at a special meeting of the City of Council of City of Brookshire, Texas, which was held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, Government Code five five one point zero zero one, at which meeting a quorum was present and voting. We would like to have a vote now.
Ms. Green.
It's a vote.
Four. Ms. Taylor.
Four.
Make the motion. Ms. Green's four, Ms. Taylor's four.
Make a motion. Need to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to accept the resolution fourteen ninety nine of the canvassing of the election on May third, twenty twenty five.
Ms. Green.
Four.
Ms. Taylor.
Four.
Ms. Magdae.
Four.
Motion pass. Thank you, Ms. Corner. Okay, swearing in. Ms. Corner will be swearing in first.
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Repeat your comment.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duty.
And I will faithfully execute the duty.
Of the office of the City Secretary of the City of Brookshire.
Of the City Secretary of the City of Brookshire.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect.
To preserve, protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state, so help me God. So help me God. Mayor. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Robert Chris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I.
That I.
Will faithfully.
Will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the mayor.
Of the mayor.
Of the City of Brookshire.
Of the City of Brookshire.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mayor Richard Sherman, now take your seat. Position one, Alderwoman Taylor. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Leo Letham Monique Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I.
That I.
Will.
Will.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Alderwoman position one.
Of Alderwoman position one.
For the City of Brookshire.
For the City of Brookshire.
The state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Stamps. Please come forward, sir.
Lyndon Lafayette Stamps.
Didn't know that.
Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Lyndon Lafayette Stamps.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I.
That I.
Will faithfully.
Will faithfully.
Execute.
Execute.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Alderman position two.
Alderman position two.
For the City of Brookshire.
For the City of Brookshire.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Corner. We have new bit, new business minutes of the regular City Council meeting on May first, twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. We approve the meetings for May first, twenty twenty five.
Second.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Item number nine, discussion if possible, action to approve resolution fifteen hundred establishing a multi-year agreement for annual city parade routes to enter into an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the closure of certain roads during such events. And for, uh, the public knowledge, could you please, Ms. Corner, explain what this particular resolution is, please?
This resolution, Mayor Richards, is in reference to our annual events that we have. Um, that would include the MLK Cinco de Mayo, Juneteenth, Christmas, and the Fourth of July. Uh, at festivals also, we have parade routes. In order for us to shut down the streets such as ninety going to Hovers Park, we have to enter into an agreement with TexDOT so that for safety reasons. And, um, we're gonna do it for five years instead of doing it for each event, we're just gonna do it for multiple events. So that's why it had to be a resolution completed.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution fifteen hundred.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Item number ten, discussion if possible, action to accept a proposal for animal animal control services. We have discussion on this particular item.
Mayor Council, um, as we all know, there's been a issue with, uh, animal control in our community. We finally reached out to someone, um, her name was Olivia Olson, who used to work for the county doing this, uh, animal control. She's very experienced. She submitted, um, her contract and all of the, the things that she's done in the past and all of her connections as far as with, uh, um, adoption, she has partnerships with, with quite a few, uh, people out there that'll, that'll help move the animals once they're picked up. And, um, I don't know if you guys had time to look it over, but I, I think this is a good deal, because right now we don't have anyone.
Also, one thing I do know is that, um, I actually had a situation at the school on yesterday. We had to call Walla County Animal Control for dogs, and, uh, if the dogs isn't a, is not aggressive dog, they will not take the dog. So the dogs would have to be an aggressive dog in order for them to take them, and I know there are a lot of stray dogs within the community, so if they're not, if they're not gonna be aggressive, they won't be taken by Walla County, Walla County Animal Control.
That's why we need her.
That's why we need.
But in this agreement, I think they will take dogs aggressive or not, right?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? I have a question. Uh, if this is approved, what will be the procedure for citizens to call in for this service?
The past procedure was to call the police department. And, um, the, the, the police department would reach out to the person who had the contract. Um, is that still in place right now, Chief? Okay.
I would like to suggest something else, can I?
Go ahead.
I would like to suggest that Monday through Friday, from eight-thirty to four-thirty, that call is made to City Hall. We do a work order because I want them to keep track of how many dogs were going in and out. If we're gonna be paying for service, I need to keep track of numbers more accurate. And for after hours, yes, they will contact the police department, and the police department will contact Ms. Olivia if this contract is accepted. But Monday through Friday, they should contact here first. We need to be able to keep track as well.
Well, I, I don't wanna slow the process down. You know, if it's aggressive dog, I don't know how long it's gonna take for City Hall to reach back out to the police department. And, um, they, they should keep a log.
What if the police department don't go to the scene? If most, we're receiving the calls here at City Hall in reference to the dog. People are coming through the door.
Well, let's put something in place where, where, um, where both departments are notified.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing, um, two different scenarios. One, if we have a regular animal call out with a non-aggressive dog. And then also one with an aggressive dog that actually is an emergency at that, at that point, that they will reach out to the police department. But for non, uh, aggressive animals, they'll reach out to City Hall. We will establish a, uh, standard operating procedure in writing, right?
Yes, sir.
If that's what y'all choose to do so, and then we, we move on from there.
Yeah.
So can I get a motion, uh, to approve the contract, the agreement?
I would like to make a motion to approve the contract agreement with the proposal of the animal control services.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion pass. Okay, item number eleven. It's gonna be a shortened meeting tonight. Item number eleven, discussion if possible, action to accept the Brookshire Municipal Water District contract for collecting trash service and setting a date. Alderman Green.
Mayor Council, um, this is, this is also an ongoing issue, well, my opinion, in the community. And, um, it's hard to, uh, enforce this, and I'll say it's hard because we have, uh, over eighty thousand dollars in, uh, delinquent payments. There's over three hundred accounts that, uh, have not paid. In the past, the Water District has always collected the, the trash services, mostly, mostly efficient way, because you know someone lives there. And if they don't pay their water bill, then you know that, that's the best way to enforce it. Um, trying to get people to come up here and pay a new bill was, is, is the hard part. And I know it's been hard on a lot of senior citizens. I talked to quite a few of them. Um, I asked, I reached out to the Water District. They agreed to, to collect this. Um, but with more of a detailed contract, and if you had the opportunity to read it, it's a lot more detailed than previously. Um, there was a, a issue with the last contract, and the Water District was stuck paying, um, some unnecessary fees to the comptroller, which caused the issue, and we actually, we figured that out. We got that resolved. But in this contract, it is the city's sole responsibility to pay those fees to the comptroller, not the Water District. So this contract is a little bit more detailed, which it should have been at first, but we, uh, we used to have a good working relationship, and it was, all of that kind of went out the window. We're starting a new contract. Um, if, uh, council has any objections, uh, let's talk about it now.
So if the contract is passed, how soon are we talking about moving the fees back to the water bill?
I would like to see it ASAP, because I don't think this list is gonna get any shorter.
Um, should we take the proper steps of letting the citizens know first, you know, about the changes? So it won't be like it was when they switched the trash over to a separate bill, you know, everybody, no, a lot of people didn't know, and it just happened, so.
How would you suggest?
I think the normal procedure for that would be like a thirty-sixty-day notice, Ms. Corner, correctly? Sixty-day notice.
Okay.
A sixty-day notice?
So the Water District has to notice about six citizens.
Okay.
Notifying them that the bills will be, uh, that the dollars will be added back.
Okay. So the notice is already going out.
There we go.
What?
The companies require sixty-day notices.
What company?
The company that we're currently with that does our billing as well as does our collection of services, our finance as far as the billing side of the trash, which is FunView. That's the software that we're using to collect the utility bills.
The Water District didn't use FunView and did?
They use InCo.
Right, and they don't need anything from FunView? They already have all of their accounts.
They don't need any of the, the template of the cost of the, the procedure. So you're gonna leave the city with the bill of not completing, uh, contract. The contract is not up until October with FunView, so we're gonna switch bills over and still leave this, the contract that's already in hand.
In the meantime, we still have delinquent payments, and then the list is getting longer. If that's already paid up, it's paid. There's nothing you can do about that. You can't get reimbursed on it.
We're gonna have to pay it also.
I'm sorry?
To break the contract, we'll have to pay also.
Is there something in the contract that we can't get an amendment? Is there penalty for amendment?
Yes.
There's a penalty for amendment?
Yes.
A penalty for an amendment?
Penalty for amendment.
Like, uh?
The agreement?
Yes.
Both parties agree to keep an amendment contract?
Oh, you're talking about between the Water District and the city?
No, for FunView, FunView.
Oh, yeah.
Is there a penalty for amendment for FunView?
There's probably some sort of pre.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I wish I would have known all of this, because I'm the one that's been spearheading this and putting this on the agenda before now. I saw all of that in there, but nobody has talked to me about it.
I sent an email out stating all of that information.
I, I wasn't on that email.
So we can.
Even in the packet.
We can, uh.
In the packet before then. I saw the email went out on August twenty eighth. I wasn't included on that email.
So we can, we can check with FunView, and if that penalty is not excessive, then we may not, it may not be a deal breaker.
Yeah.
Uh, what I would like to know is, what is the, what is the financial impact on the citizens for this? How much more will each citizen have to pay for this administrative service? Is it a dollar fifty each? Bill plus taxes? Dollar fifty increase per bill and plus sales tax? Okay. So each bill will be increased by a dollar and fifty cents, plus sales tax, which we have to pay tax regardless, no matter what. So that's the financial impact to not have to have two bills, and I think the current trash bill is about twenty-five dollars, somewhere around there, average, you know, twenty dollars. A lot of people probably spend that in gas coming up here to pay that bill, so, you know, it's, it's probably more feasible, and if you go look at, do some benchmarking at other cities, typically the, the trash bill is in the water bill. And so that's, that's kind of how this was brought up. There was a lot of, you know, we have, how much is it now, delinquent, eighty-three?
It's, uh, over, over eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand dollars, so, so, you know, and that's delinquent, that, that we have to figure out a way how to get that current. So the process is not working, and this is a good way to make sure the process works.
I, I've been told that, uh, bills were sent to vacant lots. Uh, because there's, there's not an efficient way of doing it, when you don't have, uh, a bill going to that, to that household every month. So people was coming up to me telling me, say, I, I got a bill for my house and my lot, and we don't have anything on it. It's a vacant lot. So I don't, I don't, I honestly, I was just looking at the, the list. It's just the addresses on the list. I don't even know how many of those are just vacant lots. So it's not an efficient way. The most efficient way is to, is to use the Water District.
That's right.
Okay. So, Mr. Olson, do you recommend a public hearing on this, table it in public hearing, or can we move forward?
You can move forward.
Okay. All right.
There's a little bit of information being requested.
Right.
And I, I think we need to take a look at this, say, FunView contract, and see how that arrangement works.
Right.
Obviously, y'all can do what you want, but.
Okay.
There's a couple missing pieces.
We'll figure that out.
I don't, I don't see why it would be a cancellation fee when they're already paid. If it's paid up.
I'll, I'll just have to look at the.
Yeah.
Whatever agreement we have with them.
Right.
I have not seen it today.
Okay. Can I get a motion to, uh, approve or deny this action?
The thing is, Mayor, we have already approved to switch it over several times. That's not the issue. The issue is when. So I think that's what the concern is, because we've already approved.
Well, can I get a motion to approve it now? Or can I get a motion to approve it now?
I'll make a motion, we approve the Brookshire Municipal Water District contract for collecting trash and service.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If it's just some sort of exorbitant amount of money that we're talking about, we'll look at the cancel, we'll come back.
Thank you.
Deal with that back.
Okay. We're not gonna have, be able to have an exact start date right now until we figure out the kinks too, correct? I mean, we need to make sure. Right. Correct. Yeah.
This is just giving both parties, I guess, the green light.
To go ahead and move forward. All right, moving right along, uh, item twelve, discussion of possible action to purchase a new dump truck for Public Works. This is an item that I placed on the agenda, I'm gonna have to table it because I reached out to a few, uh, dealerships, and there's gonna be more work need to be done on this particular item. And our new, our existing dump truck is back up and operational as well, so... Yes. Item number thirteen, last item before executive session. Discussion of possible action to have options to honor the Jackson family. And that's, all the woman McDay.
Yes. Alrighty, so, this is concerning Thirteenth Street. We had family members that came to us and asked that Thirteenth Street be turned to Jackson Street because they donated to the land. Um, we had a city hall meeting and discussed it, a lot of the residents over there wasn't happy about it. So, what I suggest is that we get a historical marker in honor of the Jackson family for donating that land to Thirteenth Street instead of changing the street to Jackson Street.
We have discussion.
So I'd like to make a motion to get a historical...
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have a location for it?
Um, I know it would, it, it can't be on anybody's private property, so whichever part of the, um, land is city property. I guess at the beginning of Thirteenth Street?
The city is, could, could we do like a poll?
Sure.
In the city is?
I mean, as long as it's within the right of way.
With the plaque? Okay, we can, we can do something.
It's gotta be ADA compliant, that kind of stuff, but as long as, just think about those things, if you're putting in it.
Okay.
And it sounds like that's kinda working.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, Ms. McDay?
All right, so I would like to make a motion to have a historical marker put at Thirteenth Street in honor of the Jackson family.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, executive session. The city council will meet in closed session pursuant to Title V, Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code for the purpose of consultation with legal cons, counsel, Section 551071. City council will convene an executive session pursuant to Section 551074 of the Texas Government Code to consider personal issues and duties of public officers, employees, city secretary, police chief, public works director, municipal courts clerk. And it is seven thirty-four.
Welcome back. Light is on. Okay, discussion and consider action resulting from executive section. There was no action. All right, future agenda items. Mr. Green.
I don't have any right now.
Ms. Taylor.
None at this time, mayor.
Ms. Stamps.
None at the moment, mayor.
Ms. Magnate.
Just update on upcoming events for future agenda items.
Okay. No community announcements.
This Friday, May 23rd at 7:00 PM, Royal High School will be graduating at the Merrill Center in Katy.
Next Friday.
Next Friday, May 23rd.
Okay.
7:00 PM.
That it? Okay, adjournment.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, adjournment.